It's not, it's already recorded. See in the upper left-hand corner where there's the red dot and the timer going?
Okay.
Yeah.
And so. And we've started the meetings that people can hear us, I hope. They're not here.
It should be able to hear you.
And we're waiting for a fourth member to see their line or online. So we're delaying the meeting just for a few moments. The tax didn't say he'd be joining. Day two. Yes, it said that he said yes. We're also gonna have to make a shift. Yeah.
Jack, you should just be able to share from your computer.
Okay. And Brian. Here it's mine. And so you, I want to share the video. Okay. Yes. Yep. I'll test it one more time.
Jack, procedurally, since we have a chair and vice chair not here.
You'll have to nominate someone to chair.
The chair. Second.
Yeah, of course. Public carers. The.
Basically.
Uh-huh. Open parents.
All right. So. You can walk to chat.
That's something that we say is.
He should. He should have a phone. I don't see a thing.
Can you make the dots?
All right, I'm on.
Yeah. All right, Damon, too. So technically, I think it's better procedure if you have someone here, chair. Damon is the vice chair. I'm gonna recommend you dominate someone to chair as temporary chair for someone.
What's the matter? Bill's not in?
No, Bill, I got some car problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that, or I would have been there.
Oh, well, we are, well, yeah. You blow that up, please. I can't be right there. It's what it's made that we're doing something. We have our eyes here. Yes. And he, he wants to, uh, let him talk this.
You here.
Oh, wait.
Was that better? Or do you want to keep larger? Okay, folks.
So. We need to talk about it. So we'll need a motion to second.
Do we need to open the, open the meeting first and then do?
Yeah.
Open the meeting. Gonna be recording. We're gonna have roll call vote because we have a number that's in the moment.
Okay, now, we need, since we don't have a chair or vice chair here, we need to nominate.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to nominate Barry as temporary chair for today's meeting.
Second.
On fail.
Eric College, aye.
Jay Cross, aye.
Stay.
Damon, aye.
Okay, you go to chair.
Do we have the advertisements for you, the public cameras?
They're written in, in the agenda, actually.
And should we vote to approve minutes first?
Uh, we've got a couple of corrections.
As long as we do it during the meeting, it doesn't have to be done right away.
All right, so at this time, we'll. According to MBL, chapter 48, section five, the planning board of town amendment will hold a reschedule public hearing on Monday, November 4th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Town Hall 20 Main Street, Mendon Mass, 01756 via remote access to recommend Warren Article to bring to town meeting for a vote. Warren Article will add a new zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling units in accordance with New Massachusetts state law. Copy the proposed zoning bylaws available for viewing at town clerk's office by contacting the planning department.
Eric, can I pause you for a second? I think we should get you a mic since you're. Barry. You wanna just sit over to just.
Just not picking me up.
Oh, actually.
You can hear him fine on the Zoom if that helps anybody out. Whatever he was just talking into was working fine.
We're getting on my mind. Somebody moved everything around here. All this like mobbing.
That's not mine. That's like, by the game.
Oh, that's, okay, the middle one. Okay.
So Mr. Chair, as the board knows, but for the public. Uh, I, I'll give it some context. Currently, the town amendment does not have a bylaw addressing assisted loan. Is the drawing with more. Uh, actual apartment, however you want to call it. Uh, but a lot of, not a lot, but several people have gone through the ZBA to get a use bearing in lieu of ADU. Simultaneously, the selectmen and you guys appointed a zoning bylaw review committee. Building chairs, who's not here, and one of the biggest priorities was to do something about ADUs. And we were thinking of going to springbound meeting for the ADUs. All ADUs, however, well, as we hoped, this happened in July and then in June. The state legislature, and signed by the governor, passed uh, legislation that makes a separate dwelling unit by right as of February 1st. It gives the towns the right to reasonably regulate them. However, uh, there's many mandatory items that can't be regulated. They have to be, they can only exit, they, they only can be regulated in districts that currently allow single-family and going, mend index through two residential districts, not the two commercial districts. Uh, they by right have to be 900 square feet or less. Uh, you can have up to two dwelling units per parcel. Uh, they do not have to be blood relevant or related. And those things are not discretionary. I'll go back to. The note, so what's discretionary, what the board or the zoning committee had to deal with is you can have, demand that you can only have one per unit. If you're silent on that, you can have up to two. You can request that anything more than 900 square feet for a dwelling, up to 1,200, can be by special permit by the county. And the board and the committee has done so. Um, uh, another discretionary item is you can regulate and prohibit temporary rentals by Airbnb's verbals and say that they are not allowed. If you're silent, they'll be allowed. Um, and I think that's all that it, wherever there's any discretion for a town, this is throughout Massachusetts. Uh, so the zoning bylaw committee drafted a bylaw, we presented it to the planning board, you guys unanimously voted to sponsor the bylaw. And now tonight is the official public hearing. I will add that today I received some edits by town council. So I'm gonna recommend, if you get to the point where comfortable recommending this to town meeting, that it's as amended by town council, we can go through the. If you'd like. So, I mean, two seconds.
Uh, Jack, are the edits just housekeeping, or are they something that we should all go over?
I think it's just housekeeping language. I'll try to go through them. Just all. It's there. Moving slowly. So on 13.2, these are procedural requirements. And the review procedure referred to section three under the use regulation. So on section three, we'll have ADU, and then the district will, uh, which are the two residential. And she, uh, town council wants of the zoning bylaws, so it's a little more specificity. Um. I just got this today. Uh. Okay, section B here is only one accessory dwelling unit may be created within a single-family house or housing lot. And if you remember, that's the one discretionary item you had. You could have allowed two. Uh, is it the intent to allow this by two by special permit? And that was not on. Uh, to allow more than one. So I would like to clean that up. Uh, I would suggest may be created within a single-family housing lot. Uh. I'm forgetting of some language here. And only be created within a single-family house. It may not exceed, what? May not exceed one lot by special permit or any other device. There's something to that language. I can't put language in there. Um. Then she just rearranged the language about gross floor area. Again, it can only go up to 900 square feet by right. And you can go up to 1,200 square feet, um, by special permit from the planning board. Or it is no greater than half the gross floor area on primary dwelling. And so they're trying to keep it at least somewhat excessive. That's the, yeah, so, but, so I, I suggest we just adopt from. We don't need to.
Jack, can I ask a clarifying question about that? So 900 square feet is by a right regardless of the size of the primary dwelling, and it's only 1,200 square feet if up to half of?
No, 900, if you had a house that was less than 1,800 square feet, you could not have.
Oh, okay.
You'd have to be half of your.
Gotcha. I remembered the two.
And hold on. For the season. And. That's it.
Or patients. Does that? What was that, Damon?
Does anybody have any issues with anything?
I was gonna ask.
He's, Barry's working on it.
So if the board's comfortable on voting up the public questions.
Hi, dude.
Okay. Name and crush.
Yeah, my name's Casey Dan. I'm off from 25 Level Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, question on septic systems and wells.
Yeah.
It's not very specific about how that works. Do you have to put in a septic system for the septic, the dwelling?
If, if your septic system is sized appropriate, you can, you can handle an increase square footed, you're okay. And same with the left. That's a border health issue in that zone.
Yeah, that, that's also called out in G. It says.
And it's called out, yeah.
Uh, no.
We didn't talk about it.
Braden, you provided that all dimensional regulations are meant in sufficient space to provide for adequate and safe water supply and sewage disposal.
Right.
And the item before that specifies that it has to conform with title.
So as you were, if you went in for a building term, for an ADU, I don't know, I'll make it up, 390 square feet, this less than half. Uh, the building commissioner has said, did you bring the pool from the board out for a well and septic? If they didn't, you don't get a building.
And it pretty much eliminates everything, right? Every house would build, somebody might have bedrooms at that house, everybody has. So that basically says, we're not gonna build any little buildings in Mendon because you'd have to put in a septic system, which you know, everybody knows in Mendon, those are like 40.
But you have to be able to meet the border health standards. And border health standards are based on bedrooms. So if you're increasing the bedroom, which you are, at least one, you can have up to two. You gotta make sure you have enough capacity. I mean, even if you were a single family, you wanted to build two bedrooms, that they start, you get capacity. No, it, it, it isn't an issue. It's an issue for rural communities. How are they gonna? Well, it's not a compliance issue. I mean, dark lesson, if they can do it. But if the key.
I, I, can I, I think that if we have a situation where the board of health, if they wanted to upgrade their septic, um, or if they have enough land to do whatever they gotta do to put another septic and be 100 feet away from a well or away from the wetlands, but that's all. As long as there's enough room to put the second dwelling, if they can't comply with the other boards, then then obviously nothing works, then nothing works. I mean, it's, we can't give them more land. I guess it's just, we do our job and everybody else is gonna do theirs.
A lot of communities. Anyway, not the only one, but well, um, public board or the public.
Any other questions? I don't want to take a bunch of.
Got one down there, Mr. Burke?
Oh, you have a good one.
Change for 14 Lock Street. What about if someone has a severe handicap and they require more space? And if they need a Sally Court in order to get that person in and out of the house, is there amenities for a handicap?
Not, not in the state statute, uh, unfortunately, I think the doctor's PDA in a certain hardship. I know what you're saying.
Means something, they need wide doorways, they need wide.
Yeah, it's, it's, state did not address that at all. They didn't give leniency of. It's interesting, just a side note, I, I work for the town of Upbridge as well, and today, just today, a phone call from who has an urgency where she has to take their mother and who've got displaced, I don't know anything else. And unfortunately, um, she was in the wrong zone. She was in a zone that doesn't allow a single family. So I said, and, and by the way, Upbridge is not adopting any of that. They're going with the state law for now, for now. So it's just unfortunately, I couldn't help it.
I have a question.
What?
Again, Casey Dan, 25 Level Street. The, what about community houses? You know, I know we have bylaws in, in Mendon that said you don't, you don't impact trailers, house trailers, things like that. Um, what about community houses that might come in on wheels and they're set there? And could be on top of the septic system that they, uh, or help the roofs and hold another bedroom.
I think, uh, without specifics, if it meets the building code and beats this bylaw, it's allowed.
Okay, that's going to meet the existing regulations.
Right. Yeah, you might see some of that. I don't know. I mean, the real reason, I just read the state statute, this comes under the umbrella of the state to increase the fourth. They're trying to get people more often to live under, you know, those who can't afford no, or lay beside staff. That's what they're trying to do.
Anybody else?
Again, Casey Dan, across from 25 Level Street. It sounds like the state's trying to do it, but it sounds like the town is not willing to put in an effort to try and make it work.
If you're something of bylaw, you still have to meet the building code. You can't just willy-nilly add to separate, add bedrooms to septic systems and not follow.
Yeah, for clarity, the only two items that we're offering that restricts it, if you will, more than the state, is that we're only saying you can have one pearl house, a lot. But the state said you can have up to two. And the other one is that you can't have Airbnbs or verbos or any kind of temporary rental situation in these units. Everything else is mandatory.
Yeah, you can't, you can't circumvent the building code.
And if we don't adopt this, then the building commissioner on February 1st has to enforce the state. So, and then you can have two, and you could have Airbnbs. You know, that's a policy decision of the board of town meeting.
Okay.
I think I'm all set.
Okay.
Okay, the motion.
I make the motion to approve this bylaw as written, as Jack is going to um, add the.
Town council.
So as, as amended by town council?
As amended by town council, yes. Well, bye.
I'll second.
Close and fail.
Eric College, aye.
Jay Cross, nay.
Damon, d- 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 aye.
Barry, go to roll, aye.
So it goes three to one. Now, this goes to county, that's where I technically believe this.
Yeah, this is the first step of, yeah, we don't know what's gonna happen at town meeting, so.
At this time, we're gonna open up the public hearing.
Close that one.
Okay. Go ahead. You want to close the motion?
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, I made that one. Yep. Okay, uh, so make a motion to close the public hearing or what's the thing?
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Bylaw. There we go.
Second.
Close and fail.
Eric College, aye.
Jay Cross, aye.
Damon.
Damon.
Aye.
Barry, roll, aye. Now we'll open up the public hearing, Southern Network Road. According to MBL, chapter 48, public hearing will hold on October 7th, 2024, Mendon Town Hall 20 Main Street, Mendon Mass, 01756. At 6:00 PM for the site plan review, we got in Southern Network Road. Says with map 10-188-7, property owner, Bento C. Pinto. Applicant Flavio Melo, outstanding bath refinishers, Inc. Seeking to construct two 60 by 124 single-story buildings associated parking, private septic system utilities, copy of the application, relevant plans can be viewed by contact in the planning department. Want to come up? What was presented? Yeah. Anyway, yeah. We was good. China, mind if you don't mind? Well, myself, this.
Oh, that's right.
Hello. I'm Amanda Capillari with Gary, you're in Holland, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, outstanding bath refinishers. People are in the lines here, I'm Flavio Melo, I'm looking for documents. And I'm Ben Ponto, I'm on the other property here, Mark. Uh, so what we're here tonight is to, for, uh, uh, site plan review. Um, there's an existing, just under 200, uh, lot at 7th and Muck Drive. Uh, this lot was previously park rezoned, um, for our residential, our general business. And in 2019, it was rezoned all general business for that property. Um, and in 2024, uh, this year, we went to ZBA for a variance request. Thornton Street, which is on the west side of the property, was a previously a road that existed back in the day in the Mass BOT, rerouted state layout. Uh, and Thornton Street was discontinued in 1989. And we included all our information in the supplemental package. So Thornton Street is, um, we received a variance for, uh, four quadrants that back to the side here, side yard property line. Um, off of the discontinued road Thornton Street. And, um, where Thornton Street is, um, no longer in use, it goes down the, the middle, it hasn't been deeded, um, to a half 50/50. Um, you know, halfway through, uh, the whole property owners at this time. But through the merger doctrine, I believe that's the way that Thornton Street goes. So they are proposing to construct, uh, two 124 by 60-foot buildings on the property, and the, uh, site will have a private well and septic system, drainage and utilities. Site access egress will be off of Upbridge Road or Route 16, which is within the state layout of Mass Highway. As well as a, an access point off of Netmuck Drive to the south of the property. The proposed parking spaces, we have 34 parking spaces, where 30 is required, uh, to partially retail and warehousing space to support their growing business. Uh, we have submitted an access permit to Mass BOT. Initially, uh, we had to go back to them. They did advance it to a 25% review this morning, so we're awaiting feedback from them. They're reviewing the application in its entirety to, uh, have that access way up Upbridge Road. And we received a comment from Graves Engineering this morning. We started looking through those. We didn't see anything, um, substantial as far as modifications to the plans, but all that Jeff pulled those. Jack Hunter also forward his comments that were received over the weekend from the services path that 89 Upbridge Road. Uh, we can go through some of those comments as well. Uh, but yeah, I know we wanted to open some questions and comments up to the boards.
But typically, we hear from Jeff that's, Barry.
Yep. Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Off the record, excuse me, my name is Jeff Lawson with Graves Engineering. Peer review consultant to the planning board. I guess unfortunately, just this morning, we issued a review letter. Um, we don't have any glaring concerns. Um, the extent of our comments, for the most part, are, um, fairly minor. Um, people might think that telephone numbers of voters or applicant required by the zoning bylaws are trivial. Uh, my opinion, there's a reason for it. That's why we comment on it. Um, next comment, photometric plan needs to be provided. Uh, there isn't a butter to the east, uh, but their, their property, or at least their ground is pretty well shielded by a future building on the site, and there's landscape imposed, so. Um, I'm not concerned about lighting, but nevertheless, for the record, it's, it's probably prudent to have a photometric plan. And for the planning board to understand what the, uh, intended, um, contentions are with respect to lighting. Uh, but I don't expect that that nearest resident will be affected because of the placement of the eastern building on the site. Um, a few things that I did want to share with the board is number five, soil testing. There has been some soil testing done at the site. And it shows a mix, a mix of, um, And it shows a mix, a mix of, um, overburdened soils that can be used for infiltration and the and the mix of shallow bedrock. Um, I'm only familiar with the property, having visited it once as part of this review. But also having gone by it numerous times, I believe there was some, would have been some ledge out props that were taken down years ago. Uh, the point is, there's two subsurface infiltration systems proposed, and they rely on being able to, um, infiltrate, uh, stormwater into the underlying soils. And I don't feel comfortable relying on the extent of the soil testing that's been done because of the nature of, uh, with respect to the presence of ledge on the site. It's prudent to do soil testing at those subsurface infiltration systems. If they do find a ledge, there are ways to address that through engineering. Uh, but the design, if they're going to leave in those places, uh, wouldn't rely on infiltration. Or they might see if they can move move the infiltration or the infiltration systems around. Um, number seven, permanent vegetation. Um, I always look for a note on the plan, something to the effect that all disturbed areas will be revegetated with loam and seed unless noted otherwise, or something to that effect. Just to make sure that the site is in fact permanently stabilized and not it not left in a sparse growth type of environment or you know, while although some people like riprap and rock finishes, um, there's negatives to that as well, and for the vegetation, but unfortunately, absent a note like that. I I find myself in an awkward position when I'm out on the site with a contractor and I can't tell them this is why you have to do it, because it's not allowed. Again, trivial things, but, um, um, the rest, I'll leave it, Mr. Chairman, is just, again, because these are minor issues that I've brought up, and the the rest are housekeeping types of things. Uh, the important thing, we reviewed the hydrology computations, it's common to be in order, uh, the hydrology computations support the design. Uh, we've reviewed the compliance for the mass D E P, stormwater handbook standards as well, and again, there were a few housekeeping guidelines on that. Um, but no, no glaring concerns or issues from our part. I did look at site distances at both, um, um, Uxbridge Road, those are very clear, and that's being handled through the vast DOT access bit. And the site distances to the rear street, I'm sorry, I forget the name of that. Thank you. Um, it needs to be vegetation trimming on both sides of the driveway, at the right of way. Um, with small grassy brushy types of things, but, uh, for vehicles that would be accessing, uh, leaving the site accessing Netmuck Drive, um, vegetation, I mean, um, sightlines are repeated by by the grass.
Brushy vegetation.
Going to the east.
Uh, both directions. And then going to the east, everything curves around. People approaching the site do come around to the right, but because of that curve, the bottom, you shave the curve to the left, um, it does, the the brushy vegetation does block um, sightline in that direction. Likewise, for vehicles exiting the site and looking left, there was some brushy stuff down in the right of way that should be trimmed back and that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We'll add, Mr. Chair, that, uh, since this is disturbing, or when an anchor does trigger the stormwater, we do science simultaneously.
So you we have a little trust in the issues?
Yes, we have no issues. Um, we looked at all of his comments, we're in agreement, and we've started adjusting them, uh, plan on revise, I mean, resubmitting the plan set. Uh, if Graves Engineering is okay with it. We would like to see, um, and we'll listen to the public comments as well, but, uh, possible conditional approval tonight pending revised plans will be submitted.
Well, we gotta figure out the soil testing for the retention areas, plus you're looking at, uh, whether they're gonna, the state's gonna allow you to, uh, enter an excellent sixteen, so we wouldn't be doing any prior to that.
So the the permitting process with mass BOT, um, is quite substantial. Um, I'm not sure how many projects have come through planning board, but with DOT reviews, they could take several months to get comments back for that access, just based on their, um, their review timelines. Uh, we initially had submitted, and they denied the permit. Uh, so we were required to refile. They had indicated no reason why it was denied, just the fact that they didn't feel that we needed two points of access egress. Um, but based on master plan and requirements for the site, um, and the zone that it's in, uh, the access off of Uxbridge Road is necessary to support the business. Uh, that's where, uh, the the retail space will be the showroom for our business. So, um, we we, um, provided them some additional documentation, and they reopen the permit, and they are reviewing it. It's thirty to forty-five days for comments from twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent review process. The design, if it needs to be altered, and they do not allow access off of Uxbridge Road, the site will still operate um, and function the way it's proposed. If we close that off, then we can add some more parking. It's just not ideal for the showroom and accessibility. We think closing that access off is, uh, going to pose some problems for access egress off of, um, making turns to get onto Netmuck Drive to access the property to the back.
I know I sent the board the letter from, uh, Masculine Street.
Yep. Um, so as far as that goes, and then, um, as far as the soil testing goes, uh, some communities have allowed it, um, and others have not, but we would, um, request possible conditional approval, um, prior to a building permit and prior to con- construction being authorized to proceed. The soil testing be, um, conducted and witnessed by Graves Engineering, uh, before construction can start in those areas.
Guys, can I just, uh, change the subject a little bit here? Do we have renderings on those buildings?
I was gonna get to that.
We have what?
What was it?
We have floor plans.
What the buildings are gonna look like?
No.
How many lights are on the building? How many, uh, I mean, there's a lot of things that we that I think, I mean, uh, I I love to approve on the first night as well, but I just want to make sure that we have everything that we require everybody else to do. So before we get ourselves.
Eric, there's a team question, um, maybe the board, sorry.
You got your answer? Yeah, I've got a question. Um, I'm gonna play the new guy card. Um, so, uh, I think I got a few more. So we've got two, two separate buildings being constructed here. Uh, each are what, approximately seven thousand square feet? Is that my understanding? Six thousand somewhere there?
One hundred and sixty.
Seven thousand four hundred forty square foot per building.
Okay, so collectively together, they would be greater than ten thousand square feet. Doesn't that require a special permit? I did not see that as part of the application.
Can you may address that, Mr. Chairman? I don't have the answer, but in the application package was a um, decision by the zoning board of appeals that issued a special permit for any use, any and all uses in table A of the bylaws in effect at that time. And I didn't feel I is a peer review, engineering peer reviewers in a position to question that, but the same question came to my mind, over ten thousand square feet, why am I looking at just a site plan application? Not a site plan and a special permit.
Right.
Again, I saw documentation of a special permit issuance. And I didn't feel comfortable taking a neg- putting a negative comment into our review letter, because that that's beyond me as an engineer, but but that might be the answer to your question. I just can't confirm whether it's it's a valid answer.
Well, I I think it's a fair enough question. The word came to term, and this is gonna be a special permit as well. Nothing changes, except you'll need a super majority to approve this form. Operator.
May I ask a question, uh, through the chair? Uh, what section of the bylaw is?
He's at one's chair tonight.
What section of the bylaw? Is that being referenced?
It's under, it's the site plan review.
It's.
Versus I can send it to you.
It's.
So you're, it's a key of segmentation, what they're dealing, what they're dealing.
Is it one building or is it a combination?
It's the same property, I think, Eric, as a valid, valid.
So the particular line item in the the table of uses reads, uh, line item fifty-six, any business and or retail use permitted above by right in excess of ten thousand square feet of building area.
If you want to make the argument that it doesn't comply, I think further than writing, you know, if the board disagrees, then you can always carry you up.
It was ten thousand square feet of retail?
Uh, ten thousand square feet of building area is what line fifty-six reads.
Isn't that the same thing they went running to with the North House property, where they split the two buildings on a lot?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And they, that was a special.
They did do a special part, yeah.
Of course, that never came up, and 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 I didn't realize that the application said all permits include a special permit, so I think the cover here, if you want to argue that point, the way to add will run through, but right now, the board feels it's a special permit, but it's also a site man review and it's also a film.
I guess my feelings on it is, you know, you know, we haven't gone to community questions, but where I see, you know, s- uh, some questions around traffic and whatnot. Special permit allows for us to do traffic.
Correct.
Uh, impact assessments, et cetera.
Site plan does too, but none, doesn't have as much key.
Yeah.
Jason.
I agree with all the feedback, and just given the, you know, the concerns that we did have and the changes, even though some of them were housekeeping, and maybe it makes sense to do that.
Damon.
I, guys, I don't know that I heard what they said about, do we have renderings of the buildings? Do we have lighting plans? Do we have any of that?
We have, uh, plans, and they were, they're in their packets that were emailed to you. Uh, but that's all, that and.
Right. So we had your question, Damon, now we know.
Okay, all right, so that stuff that needs to be, um, I'm sorry that I didn't get that email, Jack, or didn't get time to read it actually, but I just was concerned, I mean, if we I'm sure that I'm not as concerned as the neighbors probably are gonna be wanting to see some, what the buildings are gonna look like. And, uh, just might be something that we maybe with the next meeting, we can have all that stuff.
We always do. We always, we always see the renders and and make a decision on improvements a little based on. This is some process, we don't get them, so this point, I'll open it up to the public.
So do you mind if I read your question down the line?
Yeah, why don't we start there?
Can you spell that, sorry? Oh, it's hard to hear, can you? Can you hear? What we said, you didn't have a right, right, yeah. Eric, all right, why are you saying that Thornton Street isn't used, it's hard to hear?
Through the chair, um, Thornton Street on the west side of the property is a discontinued road. It is not, um, accepted by the town, it's not public, it's undeveloped, and it was discontinued by the town in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and that was originally used when Netmuck Drive was, uh, part of the mass, uh, DOT layout. And they relocated that to Uxbridge Road and closed off, uh, Thornton Street, so that is not, um, actual road that is in use.
Uh, why can't Thornton Street be used instead of the active, inactive? Is a sidewalk being added on the Route sixteen side in front of the parking lot?
As of right now, there's none proposed, there's none out there, uh, to be tying into, and that would be a question for mass DOT. But right now, there are none, uh, on Route sixteen, so we won't be making any of those changes unless DOT requires them.
And then I think, uh, Eric wrote this, uh, how are you prepared to deal with the traffic?
Traffic, we're anticipating more traffic than Route sixteen sees at this point in time. Um, the retail space or the showroom at the front of the building is a small showroom space to, uh, for the public to come in and make an appointment and work with outstanding bath refinishers, uh, to meet with them and figure out what they want to do for housing renovations. Uh, so it's a small area within the building, um, we have the retail space, I believe it's uh, twenty, just under twenty-five hundred square feet of retail space, and the remaining is warehousing and storage uh, for the equipment, so public would access through the front and back, uh, people driving by. Uh, but majority is going to access egress off of Route sixteen, come in, or go into the showroom, meet with the, um, the suppliers and uh, and then exit.
And then he also asked about, you know, it's difficult enough getting out on the sixteen. And then he also asked about the the footwork between stores and offices, and I think he answered that. It's down below, nothing yet, we'll tighten.
Sandra Taft, um, the one from her, uh, from the email to that. Um, I mean, the other one of her questions was, um, headlights, uh, coming to her, um, her house. They're looking at the driveway location, uh, in relationship to our driveway. Um, they're quite skewed, uh, from where our entrance is compared to where the driveway is. But our driveway is center. Um, I'm not, I don't know if you want to pass this around, but, um, we printed out a full review of where her property is versus ours. And the driveway is fairly skewed from where ours is, and operating hours or business hours are going to be, uh, who said eight AM, as the end. So we don't anticipate nighttime traffic.
I'm gonna suggest that the board, they're be-
We're gonna include that.
Include that in more informed way, and easier to understand, and a little humble consent.
So Sandra just made another point around parking, uh, parking lot lights and whatnot, so as part of the additional collateral that the Damons already mentioned, we should at least have a lighting plan as well.
And we want darker skyline, and you talked about the cars leaving the parking lot on sixteen, is that what you?
I I took that to mean parking lot lights, but.
The parking lot, but not the, it's, I don't know. We're gonna talk to them about dark car, right, this is, I think, to show us a schematic how they're claiming that they won't shine into property and try to, well, or not.
And the lights that need to be collected, um, the lights village has to be zero at the property.
That's correct.
Sandra and Robert, you guys know you can come off mute and
Yeah.
and speak right.
No, I didn't know that. I thought you wanted everything in the comments, so I apologize.
No, I'm very sorry about that. Should have been clearer.
We just need a name and address, please.
I just, if if you don't mind, could I just ask a couple more questions?
Get your name and address, please.
Sandra Taft, eighty-nine Uxbridge Road, across the street from Seven Minute Drive.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, the, the lighting situation was also something that I was concerned about. And we do in the bylaws have, um, a stipulation where if there are lights, they are pointing downward, but they're also, um, turned off one hour after, um, the the, um, the property showroom shuts down, or I think midnight, I can't remember exactly. Uh, I meant to look it up and find the exact bylaw, how it was worded, but I do know there is a lighting stipulation. So I just want to make sure. So I just want to make sure that that is in consideration. You know, when, when all the lighting and stuff, the plan for the lighting is to be discussed. I'm sorry?
They will address that. It's gonna have them address that. Not now, the next submission.
Okay, thank you.
They're gonna be submitting a lighting plan. I'm gonna be reviewing it.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Um, I don't think so.
Please, what's our next meeting? Yep, go ahead. Yes, George Harrison, three different drive. And yes, being next to this, I do have some concerns. One being the lighting, of course, which is being addressed. The other being the landscaping, you know, what is it? We're gonna be getting a landscaping plan.
That is included in there.
Yeah, I'd like to see your rendering also.
In your rendering, do you show the landscaping?
The landscaping is on this plan here now, I think, Jack, right?
Yes, but he wants to see what it looks like against the building.
I got you.
I'd like to see what it looks like. I'm gonna be looking at my house, you know, from my driveway when I walk out in the morning. Right now, it's, it's a wounds cake over there. It's terrible. You know, it's nothing to look at.
So it's only gonna go up.
The other concern I have too is the variance that was issued in two thousand nineteen for the zoning. That was only for two years. As far as I know, that's expired because nothing has been done with that property during that time. So if you go back and look at that variance, it was limited on that timing.
I'm confused because you had mentioned that the zoning changed, not that there was a variance.
I'm sorry.
It stayed different.
So zoning board, I apologize. The zoning board of appeals issued a decision allowing the entire property to be known. This does not have a timing.
Well, well, cool. Two things. I'd like to talk to the building commissioner about, he feels it has been substantial, or I forget what the word is, it's stab, but some work going on here. I know it has been, but whether that constant frequency is outstanding or not, I don't think so. And secondly, in our bylaw, it allows a business to go thirty feet past the property line when it's a residential zone. I don't know where that line would be on this. There could be, could, I'm gonna pick my words carefully, an argument that the use is within that thirty feet and that is an access road and a detention bond outside of it. I think that's a home of thirty. I'd like to see that thirty feet depicted on here. And then an argument on why do you think it compiles? And the driveline and detention bond are grabbed from the standing zone, but associated with commitment, that's where maybe get a little bit.
All right, when's our next meeting?
November eighteenth. It's the first, third Monday.
That's how meeting, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
So it's the first meeting in December.
So that will be the second.
The first Monday.
Well, I don't know if that's ever.
Everybody, all right? Sandra, you can talk.
I thought it was November twenty-first, so December second's even better.
I think I told you this twenty-first, but I can't add this.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue the public.
I just wanted to point out, I'm confused a little bit about the variance in the special permit. I see two different, maybe two different documents in the application package. I don't have the answers, but please understand, I see a notice of decision variance dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
That's for the board P.
Okay, and I see another document, notice of decision that speaks to the applicant sought a special permit to allow the entire block to be used for all uses, allowing table A for business slash retail. So those are the things I was struggling with and hearing the discussion earlier about twenty nineteen and variance, I just wanted to point out that these are the two documents I see. Variance twenty twenty-four, special permit decision.
Fascinating questions in my mind. Does the variance on the use still? Is it still active?
I see.
Even though in variances, well, now three years, but at this issue is two years. And the second one is the thirty feet that can extend as clear in the bylaw. I wanna hear the argument why this could comply possibly.
Thank you.
Does the need to change it all based on it now being a special permit or no?
No, it's the same. You got three things going on, cycling review, special permit, storm. Very similar to one more.
Is my, is my motion anything other than to continue the public? All right, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing for seven month drive to December second.
Second?
Eric, aye?
Jay Cross, aye?
David?
Damon, aye?
Eric, aye?
Quick question.
Just wanna make sure that the engineer has everything that we're looking for so that she can get everything, you know, she's got plenty of time to get it. So lighting plan, renderings, anything that she can help out with this special permit of, I guess, when, I don't know, is anybody else? Did I forget anything?
Yeah, I think the lighting. Landscaping, schematic, the. The early on the set or on the residential zone. And I also think we should, like you to take a look at this access on the Route sixteen. How much trip generation you're gonna generate on the.
And also, I'm actually not clear on my previous point of, hey, does this fall under special permit for the planning board because of the ten, ten thousand square feet?
Well, well, if you want, they want to argue that. I guess I make the assumption to agree with what you said.
I, I, yes, I would like to see this.
Square feet on the, on one piece of property, then these are both over that. And it just, I mean, it requires a special permit, right? That's just end of story. I mean, it's.
Definitely, right now it's a special permit. And say if you make an argument against it, right in here now. If you disagree or agree. But they have the right to make that.
Yeah, okay, I just, while we're gathering things for the to-do list.
Special, special permit is not the end of the world if it's just a it'd probably be easier to do a special permit to argue the fact.
We'll take a look at it and we'll work with lines and we'll reach out to Jack if we have any questions.
Dylan's on the turn.
No, she had sent out, we had the road notification, so I knew she was out. Yep, I knew she was out. So I will contact her if she has any questions. Thank you.
With the minutes, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so a couple of corrections. But we're not accepting this, we're not against the motion made by Mr. Brazino, let's take a chance and make a motion.
Cause I wrote them, so I like.
Yeah, I made the motion, but it's not like somebody else said.
Yeah, your ones always.
She starts this.
Thank you.
Just gonna amend it to that.
Eric, second.
Then on the second page. Just gonna correct spelling on my last name.
Your last name?
It's I A D A, Arlo Belli. If you wanna make a motion as amended.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept the meeting minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four as amended.
Second?
All those are failing.
Eric, aye?
Jay Cross, aye?
Damon, aye?
Barry, aye?
And we're working on those minutes. We're getting them here. It's a.
Gotta take my place tonight.
Elisa's found out, she's in the office.
Yep, she does a great job.
They are detailing this.
Hours.
You're spending a lot of time on considering what we used to get.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, yes. Don't take my, don't take my amendments as criticism.
No, I don't. I did realize how short the other ones were and I'm glad I.
Yeah, when I, when I read through this, I, I found that this was useful in, you know, at least reconstructing the, you know.
Right, anybody had a question on the previous meeting? It's right there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Believe how many times.
And thank you for everything.
Backing this research or project and you look at the minutes, right?
It's key.
What the heck happened back then?
I don't know how well it would, but I know Teams has dictation.
Right.
Yeah, I do go by that.
You do? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it might save you some time before you do it.
All right, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those are failing.
Eric, aye?
Jay Cross, aye?
Barry, aye? You say something?
I said aye, 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 aye.
See you in the second.